I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, discussion and possible approval of minutes from June 30, 2025, commissioners meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
abstain.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item four, discussion and possible approval of six minutes. Item four, discussion and possible approval of minutes from July 1, 2025, special commissioners meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Gary?
abstain.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Ray. Item number five, discussion and possible approval of blanket purchase orders.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Item number six, review purchase orders generated by the Grady County government during the current and previous events and authorize or deny payment of such purchase order.
This is partial payments. Sheriff's Department, Grady County Criminal Justice Authority, partial payment of $15,000. Highway District One. Is it? Trintos?
Trintos.
Trinitas. Trinitis.
Pronounced.
Partial payment. No, no, this is the final payment of partial nine, four, three, seven, two. Partial payment.
Partial payment.
Okay. Okay, just sorry. And then the state opioid abatement program, partial payment $2,500. OSU extension, Lorena L. Reed, estimated travel for nine, eighty-eight, twenty-four. No, sorry, it's for eleven, seventy-six. Purchase order was opened expecting to attend the Extension Specialist Conference in October 2024 due to illness that was unable to travel. I would like to use enclosed as purchase order for my monthly travel expenses. So they used it for travel, monthly travel expenses instead of. So I'm definitely wrong. Just got the explanation on. Okay, Sheriff Shellback Tactical LLC, supposed to be put on PO 251026. Attach was open on 7/23. This invoice's date is 7/16. Proper purchasing procedure not followed, nine, seventeen, ninety-nine. Sheriff Jay's Jewelry, silencer, co.
Silencer Co.
Okay.
It's company.
Okay. Invoice dated before PO, it's $1,099. Sheriff Graphic Apparel, screen print ape shirts and setup invoice dated before PO, $110. Highway District One, service period starts before the PO date. It's to Waste Connections, 17519. Sheriff Express Tire, invoice dated before PO, brakes and rotors, $214. Chickasha Senior Citizens, City Grease Trap Service, proper purchasing procedures were not followed. Invoice dated before PO, $300. Highway District Three, Caterpillar Finance Service Corp., lease renewal not approved by Board of County Commissioners, so it's supposed to be, okay, it's supposed to be on the JOT 7. Purchasing procedures not followed, $2,515.74. Highway District Three, Security State Bank, proper purchasing procedures not followed. Lease rental not approved by Board of County Commissioners, $2693.71. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary? Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item number seven, discussion and possible action on reports from the departments and direct for Grady County Fire Department and the safety and direct.
Second.
We have a slight chance of a little bit of rain pretty much most of the week. At least we haven't had the issues that Texas has had. I'll be gone tomorrow, take my wife to downtown Doctor's One. And I won't be here next month because I have a Doctor's One to work on the city, so. Other than that, everything's going on pretty well.
Jim?
I don't have a whole lot. I was out of town over the weekend, but I do know we had several stations participate in like parades and local bar fight just to sit with firework displays locally. That's really, I haven't talked to anybody since probably Saturday. So I don't know if there's anything else going on, I don't know about it yet.
Bobby?
I don't have much to report either. I talked to the sheriff this morning and we'll get that scanner that they got downstairs to fill out the forms for DEQ for the permit and we'll get that all sorted out.
Item number eight, discussion and possible action on the report and reports from the construction superintendent, Mike.
Nothing that needs to be approved. They got the plumbing on the main fixed behind the DA building, so they're backfilling the hole today. I don't know. If I take a few days, let that get back in there. And then we're doing the sewer caps today and we're going to do a metal block repair for Zach sometime this week. And we're still working on the evidence warehouse.
Item number nine, discussion and possible action entered to executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disqualifying or resignation of any individual, salary, public officer or employee, specifically Richard Wells, Title 25 upon statutes 307-V1.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Will make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve. Is that what we do?
Yeah.
Okay. Wait, we're making a motion, we're going to offer Richard Wells a raise of, did you say three dollars? No, or to twenty dollars an hour.
I'll second that.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
All right. Thank you, Isaacus. Thank you, Mike. Rick. Item number eleven, public comments. Comments from the public will be limited to two minutes. Time may be extended at discretion of the board.
Yeah. So I just wanted to be a voice of reminder. I've been coming to the county commissioners just like a learner and I'm a transplant to the county and the city. And I was just sharing and I told God I wouldn't come back to Oklahoma and he thought that was funny. So here I am after I retired here, went from the military. But I do go into disasters and crises, and crises are here even in Grady County. There's people going through stuff. And I looked at this list and there's more than 25 items on here, so that's a lot. That's a busy day, right? In one hour, we're going through 20 items that change lives, give people raises and all that. So I just ask the commissioners and the people that serve to keep that aware. We get so busy, we forget about the true people, your families, and we all matter. And in an instant, our lives can change. And I may go, I went to California, I may go to Texas with Cry, an organization I've worked with that are Christian responders since the tornadoes in Oklahoma in 2013. And every disaster, the adults make sure the kids are okay, if they are. And then they gotta do adult stuff and they gotta get housing and survive and food and the basics. So my heart is to take some love to the teenagers and children who have been affected with loss. And I always call them loveys, even a little 16-year-old may need, even a boy may need a little lovey or something and some care. So just, I think the only thing I was gonna say is it breaks your families and your loved ones. And if you haven't talked to them in a long time, maybe somebody needs to hear this, call them. And I know this may not be the venue and everybody doesn't believe in Jesus Christ and that's okay. I still care about you and thank you for everything. Amen.
Thank you. We appreciate you very much. Item number 12, new business in accordance with open meeting act, Title 25 upon statutes 311, A, nine, the business is defined as any matter not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda.
Do I have to come to these?
Do what?
Do I have to come to these?
You don't.
Okay. I thought that'd be a good time to ask.
I guess. You can get off, Eddie. I was saying yes.
Yeah, I told her, I said, I mean, those things are only indicative. I know her things. But I could say, "Right off."
Item number 13, discussion and possible approval of a private family cemetery in rural Grady, Grady County.
I'll make a motion to approve. It's out there north of, north of Tubman.
Second. Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth? Yes. Yes.
Okay. Item 14, discussion and, discussion with representatives from Rush Springs and Senior Nutrition Center. Eddie, Oklahoma.
Actually, we just wanted to see if there's, since we've got the misunderstanding of who owns our building clarified to the commissioners, we had no idea that y'all didn't know that we own that building. So now that we have that clarified, is there some way that we can write up that PO to still be able to get that money to pay our utility bills and other things? I know we have 10 to 12 to 13 utility bills, which I know is more than any other center, but we have three buildings that are connected and we use all three buildings for our seniors. And the PO, the bills don't all come in at the same time, so we, when we was writing POs before, we was getting a lot of late charges and having to pay those later. Is there any way that we can take care of that? And is there anything else that you can tell us that we can use that money for? For that $3,500. I, I don't know if everybody's aware. There's been different DAs, different county commissioners and different people on our board and so this confusion has just escalated.
Okay.
What $3,500?
The monthly rent.
What $3,500?
We was writing a PO for $3,500 because the DA told us at the time that that's how we needed to write it up to, and it was said on it rent, but it wasn't really rent, but we was paying our utility bills.
How much are your utility bills a month? What happened?
Well, they're different every month, but I would, I would say at least 1,200 to 1,300. And then we was paying other bills that came up out of that same amount.
What bills?
Well, it was just different ones that came up through the month, like a plumbing bill or something on the building, but they was denying that because they thought we didn't own the building.
Now, we did look at the, we did look at the deed and it says Senior Citizens Association. It does not say Senior Nutrition.
Well, that is what, that is our name.
Gary and I were there, we were told that five people originally bought that building and that was the association.
Five people didn't pay for the building.
There was five people on the board.
Yeah, on the board.
But I thought she said there were five people that went out and bought a loan and bought that building.
Well, no.
Questions?
Somerset Apartments is a totally different entity who has their own checking account. We do not intermingle monies. But at the time, they borrowed the money to buy that building and then the senior citizens paid them back for that. And it is in the senior citizen's name.
Sidney needs to answer those questions about the bills.
So the, any sales tax money will have, the PO will have to go, the bills will have to go through us. We can't give you money and you just use it for your utilities or a plumbing bill or whatever because that's not audited. And we're saying it's for rent, but it's not for rent. But you can fax them in when you get them instead, like, we don't need the originals now. So when you get one, you can just fax the requisition and the bill and the receiver in that same day that you get it.
You can send the receiver that same day also?
Yes. Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Because used to, we used to not be able to, we had to have originals. And so that slowed down the process and then when COVID came and we shut down the building, we had to do fax and all that. And so we never, we haven't switched back to not receiving fax. So the bills can be faxed into us.
We've got, a lot of our bills are automatically paid.
Yeah, they'll have to be switched for sales tax to, for sales tax to pay for it. It'll have to be switched.
I think I've got a question that maybe I don't understand it. If there's $3,500 to go in to pay the bills and the bills are $1,200, what happens to the other?
She said they use them for other bills that come up.
$2,300 worth of other bill? I mean, I don't, I don't, I'm not, the money has to be tracked because it's taxpayer money.
Right.
So if we're just floating $2,300, just hey, we got this $2,300 just in case we have a bill comes up, that's not, I'm not, I'm not okay with that.
It don't need to be automated.
As a taxpayer, I would not be okay with that, much less a county commissioner that's responsible for paying the bill, I'm not okay with that.
Because you could have leftover funds just sitting there and we, we have no control over that and the auditors can't see it.
Okay. Okay, but other bill, when I'm saying other bills, I'm saying like Coligan that only comes in occasionally and.
That'll need a PO as well.
Just get that in here.
That would need a PO as well for sales tax.
Okay, so in other words, we need a PO for everything that we do on that.
Yes.
Right. Every individual bill has to have it on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as you get a PO for any monies that you spend for anything, it's good.
We get four electric bills.
And if they all come in different times, you can send them in all at different times. Yeah. Yeah. Coligan would need to be opened before the first of the month, like your regular blankets. PSL, those, any utility bills can be sent in when you receive it. So.
Question again, when you had a question. Okay, what about our part of the social security that we have?
Y'all pay that.
That we have to pay.
Y'all will have to pay that. You can't pay that with sales tax.
We just want to make sure we're clear on all this so that we know.
On the contract for their, the last contract they had, Charles, was in 2015. Probably need to look at that contract and try to get it up to date.
Well, that contract was for rent.
Yeah. So. Paying rent yourself?
Right. That's, that's why I'm saying that, that's why.
I won't, I won't sign off. Oh, no.
Would we even need a contract?
I still have a bunch of questions about.
No.
Yeah.
Really? You wouldn't if you paid the utilities and any bills.
So the $3,500 will not be coming along. Instead, each bill will be paid as the POs come in for Sidney's direct. Yeah.
And any other ones y'all have questions on, just let us know and we can, we can help you.
Thank you.
Item number 15, discussion and approval on Grady County Fire Annual VFIS Insurance Premium to be paid from 8,200 Fire Department Account. Annual premium amount is $123,903.
This is insurance on all the real property and then all of the apparatus we've stood about with the additional coverage.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Item number 16, discussion and possible approval of the allocation of the use tax fiscal year 2025, 2026.
We talked about this last week and tabled it. We did some discussions on some rearranging of the allocation. I sent Steve an email. The use tax is different than the sales tax and it's just, it's something that we've given. Talked to Gary and Gary was good. He gets 30%. He's good with 10. I'm not sure Steve's is good with his cut, but at some point we have to start taking care of our courthouse and we need this money for the renovation. We're not cutting him out totally. So Gary went from 30% to 10 on the one that I suggested and I went 50% to 25 for the hospital and then gave the county the 65% of things where it would have to be.
You did tell them that's something we can change at any time, right?
Yes, yes, we can revisit it.
Correct. And it's a big thing with mine, back in 2006, when Jill Muir came in, they utilized some of that to pay dispatch. I think we're gonna be setting, okay, there is something I'll get on, feel with Jill, get put on the agenda about dispatch and their pay. I seriously think that we need to put that into my budget and the county budget for that instead of the sales tax and stuff. Because there's some 911 money that comes in also that we, it has to go to 911, but the sales tax, like I said, we visit that. But that's something we'll visit down the road a little ways. There's nothing we can do this year about it, but possibly next year we'll get it.
And I'm still learning about it. I didn't realize that that much of the use tax was coming our way. I think in prior times, there were some things that were used for operations. I have some looming urgencies in terms of facilities and major equipment in the hospital. That's why I, and because the formula of the sales tax was the third, that's why I asked for a consideration, just because I've got these fixtures and equipment things that are important to the HVAC and the, the ability to safely operate in the facility that are important. So we, we will happily work with you with whatever because we understand. I, I had to learn that the basis for establishing the tax was different between the two and I didn't understand that originally. So that's why I requested the other consideration, but whatever there is, there is and we'll work through it and we'll bring forward more of our plans for what we want to do at the facility. So it's easier to understand what's in priority. And so I'm committing to bring more of that forward to you so you can understand.
I was fixing to ask you if there'd be any way to forecast what's going on. Because we, you know, a lot of times we just, we just see the money going out and we wouldn't have no clue what was forecasted or what was under work, you know, it was just money going out.
There's, there's a lot more planning and I really want to focus more on making sure the facility, when we're using the public funds, it's more the facility, more the permanent fixtures, more of the things that it's, it's easier to categorize, things that are operational, things that I, I think there've been requests for things like supporting new surgeon salaries. And I'll be honest, that probably feels like a bet on a horse a little bit from your perspective. And I, I want to be able to describe what benefit we're gonna add to the future of the facility that, that is easier to understand and more tied to the real estate property, the longer term equipment that makes the hospital possible and less influence on operations where possible. And when you emailed me, I also was worried because of the big beautiful bill. Oklahoma Hospital Association said that we should expect a $2 million cut in our Grady Hospital reimbursement from Medicaid, which induced a little bit of a lot of concern on my part. So I'm not sure where all that stands, so it was just kind of a cluster of things, a lack of understanding and urgency of the priorities and not sure what's happening with Medicaid. So that, that's why I requested the consideration. We'll work with you on whatever is, is necessary going forward.
And we can change that 25 to 30% and change ours to 60 out of y'all. That was just a suggestion on my end, just because the gentleman that did our ARPA, Drucker, had been in my office talking about TIP and he kind of did a futuristic figures on use tax and how we could pay for our renovation with use tax, it's unfortunate. That's just a suggestion, whatever you guys, if you want to revisit it at any time.
Are you happy with? Yes. What do you?
With the 25?
Understanding you have a priority for that, yes, I understand.
And if you get, you know, if you get in a pinch, come back and we'll, we'll re.
Yeah.
I'll bring back.
We'll sharpen pencil.
Plans, yeah. I'll bring back the plans to let you, to inform you of what, why we would ask for a difference as opposed to just in general, hey Dad, can I have more allowance?
We got a bunch of that. Yeah, I'm fine with you looking for that.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
Item number 17, acknowledging the automatic renewal of lease agreement, okay, before 0051-19-01 between the USDA and Grady County.
We got to looking at that lease the other day and went with like a 10-year lease, Jill, and we hadn't, we hadn't done the automatic renewal on it. The extension office is gonna start doing their own cleaning in their part, but we'll still have to have the custodians go down to the farm service USDA area, the one-third of the holding and clean that part because it's part of the contract from what I could see. Did you look at that?
I don't know. They've only sent me a thousand. Did I approve it? If I did, then yes.
I, I don't know that you ever sent, I don't think I ever got anything back, but I've been off a few days. I think part of their lease says that we provide the cleaning.
Well, it's, yes, we have to. So, yes, we have to, whether it be our people or hired.
Yeah, I think we're gonna try to send our people over because it's just a part of it, a small part of it.
I recall seeing, yeah, exchanges about that, I don't understand.
Okay. I felt like you probably did need to look through this because since it was made so long ago and we haven't ever renewed it, then...
Well, actually, technically, we haven't ever renewed it, doesn't exist. We'd have to renew it.
And we just kind of started doing that now that you're getting them done. But anyway, there's a lot to this lease.
Well, you want to send it to me, I'll be happy to, to look at it and see if we need to have an automatic renewal clause added to it, which is easy to do.
So, what's happened in the past is General has been paying for their cleanings. And I don't think, I think OSU wanted to try just to claim theirs, their own house now. And so, but we still are responsible for the USDA building, therefore, that's the reason the lease came up. Because we wanted to see if we are responsible for taking care of their clinging to or not, and we are according to this lease. So, that's what they're trying to do. But right now, we really need to get something in place so USDA gets their cleaning done, so.
Well, you can go ahead.
You have the custodians.
Yes.
Okay.
Even in anticipation of the high likelihood of us.
Okay.
We're doing this, it just needs to get compliant.
And I think they pay us thirty-two fifty a month or something like that, thirty-two hundred a month.
For preventing delays, yeah.
Yeah, so, let me just lay eyes on it if we need to add a cancellation slash auto renewal clause, it's, you know.
Do you want me to forward this email to him real fast?
Is it the whole lease?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can we table it then?
And like I said, you can table the lease just because Charles doesn't look, but as far as the clinging, we need to make sure we...
I'll go down, I'll talk to Vicki when we get done.
So, do you want to just table this since it does talk about just the lease?
Yes.
Motion table.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Okay, item eighteen, discussion and possible approval of maintenance agreement for KELPRO fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six for OSU Extension and Emergency Management.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Yes.
You want to push that list on down there?
Item nineteen, discussion, discussion and possible approval of a lease agreement for Quadient for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six for the session.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Yes.
Item twenty, discussion and possible approval of the following agreements for Brady County District One for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Probably all that, I would imagine. Okay, item twenty-one, discussion and possible approval of the following agreements for Brady County District Three for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
And Gary, just so you know, that's not all of them.
Yes, there's one here that has four graders on it.
There's just one with four graders on it?
No, there's just one.
And that's the reason your POs were wrong, doesn't it?
I think this is all me. There might be one spot on here. What'd you go on?
Okay. All righty, item twenty-two, discussion and possible approval of email hosting agreement for Industry Systems for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six for District Three. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Okay, item twenty-three, discussion and possible approval of bid request for the purchase of property in the Minko area for a satellite yard for Brady County District Number One. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item number twenty-four, discussion and possible action concerning clarification of the duties of all those affected as might be permitted by law and other limitations, as well as all further related issues that affect the implementation of this Board's item number seventeen. Discussion and possible action to change the status of County Road thirteen thirty from reserved to open from County Street twenty-eight fifty going west for thirty-five hundred feet, which was on this Board's agenda on April fourteen, twenty-twenty-five and approved by the Board on the same date.
So, Mr. Brown, you are the property owner that is landlocked. They are not giving you any, you're able to walk to it? So, I move that the following be added to our previous discussion and resolution concerning the opening of this section line for the purpose of a road. Mr. Brown may use the county's easement to install a road for the sole purpose of accessing his property. This road will be no more than twenty-two feet wide. This road may be any composition from simple dirt road or path up to an asphalt road at his discretion. The construction of this road must be done only on the county's easement. Therefore, a survey must be done prior to this construction to confirm that the road is only constructed and located on this easement. All costs or expenses required to perform this survey and/or install this road will be at Mr. Brown's expense. All continued maintenance costs or expenses, expenses for this road will be borne by Mr. Brown. No county monies will be used for any part of the construction or maintenance of this road. This road will not be included in the county's list of approved and maintained roads. Mr. Brown shall produce the survey of the section line easement prior to commencement of the said road construction to the Board of County Commissioners for approval. Proof of construction of said road will be produced to the same Board upon completion thereof for approval. No property owner on which this easement may rest, shell in any way, impede the referenced survey, construction, and/or maintenance of the type of road determined by Mr. Brown are in any other access or attempted access of Mr. Brown's property. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach? Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item twenty-five, discussion and possible, possible approval of causing a check from State of Oklahoma in the amount of thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars into the State Copioid Abatement Program MNO account. Make a motion to approve.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Second. Second.
Second.
Ruth?
First.
Shoot, the hair quicker on trigger.
In jeopardy.
Okay, item twenty-six, discussion and possible approval of utility pipeline road crossing permits, waterline, fast line permits, and driveway ten horn permits.
That's yours.
This is mine.
Cam, let me know if you have.
Okay, I'm not a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Twenty-seven, what's it?
Monthly reports.
Monthly reports.
Okay, item twenty-seven, discussion and possible approval of county officer monthly reports. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Second, yes.
Yes, you might just want to re-click them. You want to start right here? I think each report, yeah, I think each report. This is Micah's, but she has like three reports there, so you don't have to go through them. I'm sure you've got them all. I think they look, things are familiar. Other than that, things are just from today.
Oh.
I'm gonna look at them just to make sure. I guess sometimes. Did she, did you get the last one on that one? Because that one was just the...
Yeah.
Board, any of the chairman.
Oh, the very last?
Yeah, the very last one.
Oh, right, right there.
And this is the only page.
Yeah, that's the only page, yeah.
Okay, item twenty-eight, discussion and possible approval of estimate of needs requested appropriations and transfer appropriations. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Don't freeze this, I mean, since all stations are on there. Twenty-eighth, discussion and possible approval of estimate of needs requested appropriations and transfer appropriations.
I'm glad you did that. We're just up to the adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ruth's always on there.
Gary? Zach? Ruth?
Yes. I'm trying to take the heat off, I think.